This didn't take us off mute, so we do have, it's seven ten, and we do have a quorum. Technically, a quorum would be three members, we were referring earlier. Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development for the town.
So I'm Phil Pierce, I'm the town attorney.
So we're your master of ceremonies for this evening. This is really an organizational meeting, and we have a couple items of business. One would be to set a meeting schedule, and the second would be to elect officers. We would need a chair and a secretary. We do record these meetings, so you don't have to take copious notes, and in fact, I think we'll have to talk about how we handle hearings, but for the most part, even for something like this, we're just recording who's present, who's not here, and then any actions taken by the board. It doesn't have to be a, you know, verbatim transcript of what was said or not said, because we can rely upon the recording if anyone wants to listen in and listen after the fact. So I thought it might be helpful, you guys have all kind of introduced yourself informally, but if you want to go on and introduce yourself to each other, so we all know. And, you know, if you want to provide a little bit of background as to why you're, you know, what you may have done with the town previously, if anything. So I know Doug's been on the RTM, so...
So, Charles, I did three terms on the RTM. In the early aughts, I was Majority Leader for one term, and then my constituents decided I was no longer worthy of their vote. But I've served on a number of things. I served on the conservation as an alternate. I was on the Greater Bridgeport Regional Planning Agency, which was a real snore. But we did, one contribution I made was that I sat with Saul Bricks for four years, and we put a roof on Ludlow, on Ward High School. And thanks to our Hartford delegation, we came in, they started out with a budget of eleven and a half million, and we came in under seven, but they were talking about peaking the roof rather than keeping it flat, so we were able to keep it under budget, so...
You're a full member of the commission, correct?
Of what?
This...
Of this commission, yeah, yeah, yeah. Bill asked me to, if I would sit on it, yeah.
Maureen?
Yes, Maureen Greenberg. I am an alternate here, and so I became interested responding to a letter from the first select woman, and I am, I've been licensed as a real estate broker since 1996, and I felt that I wanted to do something for and with my town, and I might have some background to assist, so I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Doug?
I'm Tom Lambert. I was on the RTM as of last term, and actually I helped co-sponsor and pass the ordinance to establish the Fair Rent Commission.
So you're to blame, no?
Well, no, exactly.
Well, I think that Central Assembly is to blame.
Right, well, but when I stepped off and I said I wanted, you know, I just had a second kid last year and have responsibilities at home, RTM has a lot of time commitment. I said, "Okay, okay, it's fine. So you want to serve on the Fair Rent Commission that you helped create, right? And so how can I say no?"
Hey, the boss speaks, how high do I jump?
Right, right. So here I am. My absence from town business lasted six months. But I was born and raised in Fairfield. I went to school at St. Thomas. I've lived elsewhere for school, and then Stanford for a while. When I moved back here, I wanted to get back involved in town matters, and that's how I served on the RTM last term. I'm a litigation attorney as my day job at Pullman and Conley, right down the street from Phil's office. And part of my interest in affordable housing, just in general, but also landlord-tenant issues, comes from a lot of pro bono experience that I have representing indigent, oftentimes veterans, or victims of domestic abuse, who are trying to find housing or ruin bad housing situations.
What for you?
It's nobody, it's no secret that affordable housing in Fairfield County is almost an oxymoron. And so the idea of having housing opportunities and helping tenants with their landlords to have a more equitable sort of dynamic is something that I practice most professionally and is a passion of mine here, too, so that's how I'm doing it.
Thanks, Tom. Eileen, you must be our tenant rep, right?
Right, I'm Eileen Francis. I'm fairly new in Fairfield. I came from New Jersey. I've been here going on three years. I was involved in my town in different little politics.
The kids grew up here?
Well, my grandchildren grew up here.
Grandchildren, right.
I've been here, I didn't miss any sporting events, so I do back it, yes, right, jokes. So I do appreciate, I couldn't afford to live in Fairfield without this program. And so I moved up here, and in one year I got a $276 increase, and I went all over and to no help, no one knew too much about the program. So I ended up going to Hartford and did get help there. So I really do appreciate you having this program, and I want to represent the, yeah, we got to pay our fair amount, but, you know, we can't pay way up there, so, and I want to be a good tenant, and I know I am. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, I'm Mark Barnhart and Phil Pierce, so...
Yep. And I was on the RTM for three terms. I was Minority Leader for a term and Moderator for a term, so took a break when I had kids. Now I'm back in this room.
And I've been the Director of Community Economic Development for about 20 years.
For like ever, man.
Yeah, so I've been doing a lot of different things. This is part of my ever-expanding portfolio, but definitely proof of love, so. So I think, again, the two main things that we really need to accomplish tonight is to elect officers and, more importantly, probably set a meeting schedule. I don't know, you know, if, you know, in terms of meeting schedule, at this time, you know, during the month, like a Thursday, we seem to, we have a quorum, but we don't have full membership. But again, part of it is just making sure that we have availability, not just for Phil and myself, rooms themselves, because, you know, there's a lot of different boards and commissions that do meet regularly. So I know this particular date obviously works, but I don't know if anyone has any other suggestions.
Are we going to have a regular meeting or irregular meeting if we don't have business for us?
So I'm a proponent or suggest that we have established a regular monthly meeting date, whether it's, you know, for Thursday of the month, seven o'clock, or whatever. But then if we don't have any business to transact, we just simply cancel it.
That's fine.
Yep, that's how it works.
And then that also would help me as your, I guess, intake. People that call, I'm providing staff support to this board. I'm their first point of contact, so they'll call with any questions and if they want to file a complaint, you know, then I would know when the next available, I would try to schedule a hearing based on your already-established meeting schedule. You know, we do have one complaint that we've received to date. As I was saying before we started the meeting, we have, I've received about half a dozen inquiries from different people, some more than once. I've had ongoing conversations with a few folks, only one of which has resulted in an actual complaint, although I, based on today's exchange, we may have a second one tomorrow morning. Really, until this all kind of sorts itself out, I'd be, everyone's kind of, we haven't even, we've done a little bit of outreach and communication to landlords and property owners to let them know that this is the new regime, if you will, but we haven't done a comprehensive mailing. I'm not even sure that's possible, because we'll find, you know, technically, if you have a rental property, you should have a certificate of rental occupancy from the Health Department. We often find that that's not the case. I mean, the larger apartment buildings, sure, that are professionally managed, they have property management companies and the like, you know, we know who they are and can get ahold of them, because they're filing reports with us annually, but the smaller apartments, the two, three, and four-family, eight-unit-type deals, not necessarily. So I think, again, it'll take a little bit of time to sort itself out, and in the meantime, I'm sure, you know, we'll be a little busy, you know, as people want to exercise a right that they didn't have before, which is to at least have a little bit of due process if they feel like, you know, the rent increase or the rent that they're paying or other housing conditions are not what they would have expected. So those are the main order of business. I don't know, Phil, if you, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about the...
I mean, I'll, you should all read the ordinance. It's pretty, you read it? It's pretty detailed, Tom probably knows it better than any of us.
I copied, copied the state statute to do that thing.
So, I mean, your main power is and obligations to receive complaints and communications about excessive rental charges. You have a number of other powers. You can make studies and investigations regarding rental housing. You have pretty wide-ranging powers for how you conduct hearings when you have a complaint. Those are in Section Two. In a hearing, you can determine whether something is an excessive rent or not, or the rental charge is excessive, and there's factors to consider. Upon filing a complaint, there's a process that's followed, and I think, you know, the process that the commission will follow is Mark handles the intake, as he said, so he notifies the complainant, as it's set forth in eighty-seven-four. There is consultation to see if they can resolve it informally, which that's handled by staff, in this case, Mark. The hearing's supposed to be scheduled not later than 30 days after filing of the complaint, unless it's impractical, impracticable. Here, that may not be met, but it's your first meeting, and you just were constituted, so I think, you know, you should schedule a hearing on that one as soon as you can, but, you know, within reason. But going forward, you know, you've got to try to meet that 30-day window for scheduling the hearing, and then you've got to give notice 10 days in advance. I'm assuming Mark would be the one to give notice. After you close the hearing, you have to run...
Sam, sorry. Where's the location of the hearing?
You decide, probably here, but you decide that. You would, in the notice, you would decide where the hearing would be.
Okay.
So, but typically, it would be, you know, your conference room. I mean, the hearing could be an agenda item on your regular meeting.
Okay.
So it's, the benefit of keeping your regular meeting is that you can have a meeting where you can add to the agenda or have on the agenda. You've got to do it 10 days in advance, but have on the agenda hearing to determine this complaint, right?
And are the hearings limited with time?
It's up to you guys and how you want to run your hearing. I mean, there's procedures, you can, you know, you can issue subpoenas, there can be examination of witnesses, I mean, you can make it, you know, wide-ranging. It's up to you on, I think, how you want to administer it and...
Okay.
I, the RTM was considering an ordinance in compliance with state statute. We did, I did talk to a number of communities that were like Fairfield. Not the New Havens and Stanfords that have a separate, you know, department responsible for it, but more, you know, Simmsbury, West Hartford, communities that are smaller, don't have full-time staff assigned to this role. And, you know, it does, it is very, there are times when they're busy, but there are other times when they don't meet at all. So some communities have established, you know, bylaws and procedures to further inform the process, and that might be something we want to consider. We do have a complaint form, we do have some letters, some form letters, that we've had to create on the fly, kind of to deal with the first complaint, which is basically, you know, it recites some of the information in the ordinance, basically acknowledging the complaint to both parties, and then, you know, providing some framework as to the process, as well as, you know, for the landlord to make sure that they're aware that, you know, there are, it's unlawful to retaliate, those types of things. So that's not to say that people won't try to do that, in which case, you know, again, that may be, you know, cause for action by this board. So I do think, I agree with Phil, the way it reads the ordinance says you will schedule a hearing within 30 days of complaint, so if we schedule a hearing tonight, we'll be within that 30-day window. We won't actually have the hearing within 30 days, but I don't know if that, you know...
It says...
We just need to schedule a date within 38 days.
Man, I don't know, I don't want to...
So it should be scheduled no later than 30 days, I mean...
If practical, though, right? Saying we weren't constituted until tonight, so...
I think, yeah, I think under the circumstances, you're doing it as quickly as you can. You know, in terms of how long the hearing should be...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, you have to put, like, okay, we're going to have a hearing, but like each person gets 10 minutes to talk or 20 minutes.
I think as long as you're not restricting the ability of the parties to present their case, so to speak, I think it's fine. I mean, they have the right to present witnesses, they have the right to cross-examine, to offer evidence, so there will be back and forth. I think, you know, whoever is your chair, once the back and forth is redundant, the chair should probably close it, or say, you know, "I'll give you each two minutes to sum up at this point, make any final points, and we're going to close the hearing." You know, they have, this ordinance is giving people rights, and there's probably some due process right to have, be able to present your case to the commission, but doesn't mean that people can do endless evidence, so we shouldn't have like a 10-hour hearing.
Right, well, that's what I'm trying, thinking ahead, and like if you, and then at some point, you would say, "Okay, we'd have to reschedule this hearing to..."
Most of the hearings I reviewed from other communities were resolved, I mean, they had an opportunity to present their case in one hearing night, and then, you know, whether they decide that matter that evening or at a subsequent hearing date, sometimes it would get continued to another meeting if they needed to present additional evidence or that our group were late. But for the most part, I think things were concluded within, within one hearing.
Mark, do you have a link, I was, I got caught up with work today, but do you have a link from, you know, a comparable town like West Hartford or somewhere, where you have minutes and sort of a description of, you know, evidence and so forth? I mean, I have a pretty good feel for that, but...
Well, again, the minutes...
Real-world, you know, experience or whatever.
Minutes of the meeting may not, you know, fully...
Okay, that's true.
Fully, you know, characterize the goings-on of the meeting. It's not a transcript, but it's, it's...
Right.
You get a sense as to the...
Okay.
Norwalk has one as well, that's kind of like a...
A lot of communities do. I, you know, I know some of the larger communities like Norwalk and Stanford and New Haven all have, you know, a Fair Rent Commission staff, you know, there's actual...
Full employment, yeah.
It's more, it's more muscly, staffed and funded and all that, so...
In this year's budget, did you get an appropriation for your office?
No, well, we got some, we got some consideration in the budget, partly because, you know, again, I would anticipate there'll be some...
Studies.
From Phil's...
Yeah, if we, if we have studies and investigations, that's going to turn out by staff.
Right, yeah. So we would have to, we did ask for some additional dollars to do a study, if we needed to do a study, and so there is some money to do that. We've done some informal studies ourselves, you know, and so we could...
And I could do rent studies, like, you know, the cost of rent, and like what's, you know, do comparative market analysis.
We're here to bring our experience to bear on this, I would think, so, you know, that with staff, you know, I just want to make sure that you're not, your staff isn't getting extra responsibilities for no additional pay.
Well, it is.
Time, please, make sure they earn their money.
You know, it is, I guess I'm the guy who says, "Sure, I'll do that." You know, "I should learn, I should learn, I should have learned better by now." Technically, you do have two ex officio staff representatives, the Health Director and myself. The first complaint, actually, there was a health component to it, where they were alleging unsafe or unsanitary, unhealthy conditions. So that was immediately referred to the Health Department for investigation, and they did go out and do an inspection.
Good.
So those are, and that's why the Health Department is involved. So you may have complaints that allege not just simply issues with rent, but also the...
And they have additions or...
Yeah, I would think that, like, oh, yeah, that's all health, health-related, any kind of...
Sanitation.
Sanitation.
Safety.
Safety, all that, that's Health Department.
So it's, you know, it's, we'll see how it goes.
You've got to make a decision within 30 days of closing the hearing. There's a statement here about compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, so you're now constituted as a body, so, you know, you shouldn't engage in deliberative discussion outside of meetings. This is where you talk about the business of the commission. So, you know, you should really minimize it, and if you have deliberative discussions with a quorum of the body, so, you know, that would be three people that constitute a legal meeting, so you want to avoid that. Just, you know, keep it all in the meetings. What else? There is an appeal procedure, which that's kind of interesting. Other than appeals have been filed anywhere on this yet, but it goes to Superior Court. I don't, it doesn't say whether it's a record appeal, I would imagine it's a record appeal, but I don't, Tom, do you know?
Well, I mean, we're not going to have... I've never seen a Fair Rent Commission decision appealed to the Superior Court, or know how that would even, how that would even work.
I don't think you would have any, I don't know what your role would be in that point, but we could figure it out for that.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see what happens, I guess.
Tell one aggrieved landlord, there is a, that...
Well, I mean, but there's a minimum threshold for, you know, monetary issues to the Superior Court, otherwise we're in small claims court, and...
Unless they go through...
It's like an administrative appeal process.
That's true, right, right.
Yeah, they're just going to say they're going through those tickets to the Superior Court.
And then there's, you know, a section on penalties for failure to comply with lawyers, so it's pretty comprehensive.
Now, every year, do they tell you, they send you what the increase in the rent would be, a percentage? Do you...
You know, landlords aren't required to report that information to our office or any other town department, with the exception of any, any property for which we have a restrictive covenant in place for any affordable housing. They do need to file a compliance plan with our office, and so we will be aware of what their, what the rents are being charged for affordable units within town, either at the 80% or 60% area median income threshold, or any other threshold. But as I pointed out to the property manager at Alto, for example, just because a rent might be compliant with the affordable housing regulations, you know, that they are maximum gross rents. So they could be in compliance with the maximum allowable rent under the restrictive covenants, but that still might, in the eyes or perception of the tenant, be grounds for an appeal to this body.
Overflowing toilets.
We've had some of those where the increase is pretty substantial.
Right.
And so I've, you know, my first, when a complaint comes in or an inquiry comes in, my first response is, "Have you spoken to the landlord or property manager to see if you can address your particular circumstances and see if you can work something out? If not, that's the first step." And then we can also get involved and contact them. In the case of this particular property, the property manager told me, "Well, that's what the rents you told me that I should be charging." I was like, "No, that is the maximum allowable rent. You have discretion to set a rental amount below that, that's appropriate. So you can't exceed that, but you can, you could set any rent level up to that." And so my suggestion to them, to the property management firm, was, "I think you should try to work things out, because this could constitute a complaint that you'll have to eventually, you know, appear before the Fair Rent Commission." So it's initially, the thought is, try to work something out. If not, we can help, you know, try to see if we can mediate something, but if not, then the tenant has the right to file a complaint. And, you know, up until the hearing date, or even during the hearing, they could still reach some kind of accord, which we would certainly agree, but if not, then it's up to you to decide what's fair and equitable.
Right, and I think, I feel like that's what Eileen's asking, are there guidelines?
Yeah.
Guidelines are...
One percent, is it two percent?
No, it's, it's...
Or is it just case by case?
What you think is a case by case, so...
Case by case.
And the ordinance has factors to consider.
Right.
But I don't think it's, there's nothing strict.
It's how we interpret those factors.
The case itself, the specific case.
Right, right, I don't think there's any hard and fast numbers.
Right.
Who is it? And each case would have to be judged on its own.
Does that make sense? I mean, that won't make sense to the landlords.
No. My initial conversation, no, it doesn't, but it's going to be a slow shaking-out process.
Yeah, but I think our job would be to try to be as persuasive in the direction of the landlord as possible.
Well, it's both, it's both parties, so I, you know, there are situations where, you know, if the landlord is making a good-faith effort to come to compromise, then, you know, the tenant should, you know, at least consider whether or not that is a fair and just means of resolving this. So, you know, I think it's partly to bring both parties together to some, come up with something that they feel mutually is beneficial, but if not, you know, then you'll have to make that judgment as to what you think is right.
Yeah. And under the Fair Housing Commission, there is a certain clause, seniors do have a different clause in it, which they can't raise, the seniors' rate is high as a tenant's rate, so, and that's what I did find out, you know, and it was accepted where I live. And like I said, I'm in the trademark, and I offered to increase my rent so much percent to them, and they accepted it with me just offering it, so, but I don't know every year how it will be, you know, so...
So the other thing I will mention is that I did reach out to one of the individuals who provided some training for municipalities, municipal officials considering establishing fair rent commissions, and he's in a staff attorney to Connecticut Legal Aid, and he's more than willing to provide an orientation program for new fair rent commissioners. And so if that is of interest to this group, I can just simply reach out to him, provide a couple dates that seem to work well for this, this board, and he'll be willing to provide that pro bono compensation. So it's, he said it's between himself and another staff attorney, and there's, sometimes they have the person who runs the New Haven Fair Rent Commission also conduct these types of trainings, but all three of them would be potentially, you know, available to assist, and they can either do it in person or via, we'll probably set it up online, because they're coming out of Hartford. So I just need to provide them some dates and times that work for us, and they'll be happy to schedule it, so...
I almost think it's necessary.
That may answer some questions, because I'm not an expert.
Really, I think that's great, Mark, really.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I would, you know, they've been very, I've called a couple times already with questions, and he's been very responsive, so...
Right.
So I guess the two orders of business is, do you want to feel comfortable electing a chair and a secretary, and then establishing, you know, a time that at least works for the four of you? I guess the folks that aren't here will have to...
Buck it up.
You know, I do think it would be helpful to at least have a regular meeting date on the calendar, so, man, of course.
I have to say that Tuesdays and Thursdays are best for me.
This is what, the fourth Thursday of the month?
It is.
As good a date as any, as long, I mean, if there was regular conference room availability here and...
I think so, when I looked at the dates, I don't know how...
We're not conflicting with any other, we're not conflicting with any other commission, you know?
I, you know, I have, sometimes Tuesdays I have Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, and Mondays and Wednesdays seem to be busy with other commitments. I have affordable housing. Tuesdays I also have Arts Commission, and then we have RTM. affordable housing, Tuesdays, I also have arts commission, and then we have RTM, and so, there's a lot of boards and commissions early in the week. I hate to schedule things on Thursdays, but hopefully, you know, again, depending on your number of complaints, you, you may not be-
Yeah, and I mean, you can always, if the schedule doesn't work, you can always, you know, schedule special meetings, or, you know.
So, if, if we did stick with the fourth Thursday, the next meeting, regular meeting would be the twenty-third?
Would we be expecting something like the packet that the RTM used to get, or still gets, or, we've got an agenda in advance?
Yeah, I would try to provide you with some information, at least, you know, I would think, the written complaint, so you can see the complaint.
Yeah.
And obviously, any minutes or any other documents that you're gonna consider, we'll try to send that out to you, via email.
Yeah.
I won't be driving to your house.
I remember way back when, I think a cop had to deliver it, I think, way back when, two thousand one, two thousand two?
I know I suggested the fourth Thursday every month, and I just know that next month I have a conflict on the fourth Thursday, but don't let my schedule hold everybody else.
Oh, I mean, we could do it, I know without looking that Thursdays generally are okay for me, on an evening night, I don't know about the rest of you, we could do it, there are five Thursdays in May, we can also do it like the third Thursday, if you wanted.
Yeah, if we wanna keep it regular.
The only reason we did it this was, it's the earliest we could get a quorum together, so, there's no magic to the fourth Thursday, but if, if the third works, that would be the-
Thursday's cool with me.
That would be the sixteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
What date now?
May sixteenth.
Thank you.
And so, I don't, I can, if you wanna hold off on adopt, formally adopting a schedule, I guess to see if more of your colleagues will join, you know, we could do that.
You could put, or we could put, like, proposed meeting schedule on the agenda-
I would put a meeting schedule.
And then you guys could discuss it, and tweak dates as needed.
So, I would, I would, that's what I typically do, is prepare the, you know, the calendar, and then send it out for all of you gonna consider.
It's really only gonna be until, you'll have to have another organizational meeting in November, right?
Um-
They do them in January.
I usually do them in January, yeah, right after the first year. The only other thing we would probably need is, or actually, we'd set it in December, really, for January one, so. Probably should have a chair and secretary. You know, amongst the four of you, one of trolls trolls.
Nominate Lambert.
For which one?
Chair.
Chair and secretary.
I second it.
Are there any other nominations?
As long as somebody else does the secretary job.
Yeah, so, close nominations, I guess, and then, all in favor of Tom Lambert as chair, say aye.
You can vote, you're, you actually see it as an alternate.
Oh, okay.
For this meeting.
Anyone opposed? You think it's unanimous?
Thank you.
Is there any nominations for secretary? You can have, you can nominate people, aren't you?
Nominate.
Yeah.
I think it's taking notes right now.
I nominate.
I see two names, two, two, two-
The only issue that I would, I don't know, again, if we can have an alternate as a, as a, as a, sir.
I don't know.
Yeah, I nominate, Eileen.
Yeah, okay, Eileen, if you-
I would take notes, I don't even know what it entails. Should I take it until the next people come in and I could give it off to them, or no?
Well, uh-
You could always resign, I mean-
We could not, we could, we could hold off and see if there's somebody else that's-
Yeah, we got, at least we got-
We could not fill the position and just have you be acting secretary, I mean, you're seated as a full member for today.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, if the other members don't show up, you'll be seated as a full member for all meetings, so.
Yeah.
So, Eileen, do you not want the job?
Not really.
Okay.
That was the sense I got from her reaction.
I don't wanna hold back, no!
There you go.
Tell us how you really feel.
You okay, Maureen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so we'll have you as acting for first and this evening, and I guess we can-
Take you up to the next meeting, if anybody wants to, and if it, if it goes like this, you know, you can probably just continue in the role.
Okay.
And, you know, if there's one regular member that's missing, that seat has to be filled by an alternate, so, and often-
I have no objection.
Often, often alternates participate as regular members, because the regular members don't always all show up, so.
Right. That's true with a lot of the board.
Yeah, that is, right, you'll see that with, you know, zoning boards and other boards. So-
So, do we have to vote for the acting?
Yeah, we voted for you.
Yeah, but he didn't really, the former last time.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Okay.
There you go.
You're it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First order of business.
Yeah, I guess with the election of a chair, my job is done here, you're out of here.
Happy, good, Mark.
Well, if there's no other business, then I can continue the meeting, right?
Yeah, the only other thing, I'll just, I will, we'll try to schedule, I will propose May sixteenth as a hearing date for Torres v. Hooper. I'm hopeful, it seemed like the parties are moving in a direction of settlement, and if we can accomplish that, that would be great. You know, so, we'll continue to push that, but if not, you know, sometimes this, having a hearing date will help sharpen the mind a little bit.
Or house-step settlement.
Well, it may, it may have other people step up, and, you know, we may have other stuff to do.
And you may have another complaint, again, the email I got at four forty-five this afternoon.
And if I am, since I am chair, and if I'm gonna be the one that oversees, I'll keep things moving, don't worry, so.
Yeah, Tom will be a good chair with his litigation background, so.
So, yeah, I don't have anything else to present this evening, so.
Any other business from anybody else? You're not-
Well, I was, I was just gonna ask, how many, how many grownups are gonna be here for every meeting, both of you, or?
It may be me, or it may be somebody, I recently brought on board a part-time housing specialist, who has a lot of experience in fair housing issues, and working in this realm, and so he may be here in my stead, yeah.
I mean, I'll, I'll come to any meeting that you guys want me to, I think, for your first hearing, I think it probably makes sense for me to be there.
Yeah.
You may want me to attend all hearings, or at least, you know, in the early going. I think if you have a regular meeting without, you know, a hearing scheduled, I probably don't need to be there, but Tom will, you know, let me know, if you guys want me.
Because we wouldn't want any, like, liability, if we did something wrong.
Oh, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you'd worry about liability.
Okay.
I mean, if you make, if you make a decision that people aren't happy with, the process is to appeal to Superior Court, so.
Sometimes, though, it's easier to have a staff attorney available, in case there's a question of interpretation of the ordinance, for example, that perhaps the, the parties before us don't wanna, I'm giving them a hard time as the chair, that's what I say, but I can defer to the staff attorney, or the town attorney, he has credibility, he's not, he's not making a decision one way or another, so he's, he's, you know, agnostic as to the outcome, and so, might help us buy some credibility with people before us if there's a question.
And so, do you think we need to have our, what did you call them, our code, our-
The ordinance?
Uh, no, we were going to bylaws of process?
Yeah, some, some communities have adopted bylaws.
By the next hearing?
I don't know, I think that's if we want it.
Okay.
We have, we have, I would, everybody should bring this, you know, so we know the sandbox within which we need to play.
Okay.
Which-
But not how the meeting, not how the hearing is expected to-
Well, I think that we're gonna have to see how we wanna do it at first, and if we wanna have more formal process, that we wanna put pen to paper on, we can do that, or, I, I, I wanna see how it goes first, to be honest, before we make any rules as to, you know-
I think that's fair, get a couple of meetings under our belt before, you know-
And then say, like, this is how it's gonna work.
It might be old hat for us, that, you know, we're just-
I mean, I, I think this has been going on long enough with enough towns that, you know, it's not likely that there's something that we're gonna find glaringly missing from the ordinance, you know, that we need to address, but-
You also won't have to reinvent the wheel if you decide you wanna do bylaws, 'cause they'll just look at what other towns, and then after you have some experience, you'll know what you like, and what you think works.
Yeah, that's a very common approach.
Many, many communities of this size don't, don't have-
Yeah, I don't think you need it.
-processes or bylaws, I mean, I've found a few, but it's the exception, right?
I mean, you only, if, if you get a lot of complaints, you may wanna have that to streamline the process, and have more, the, put, put more on us on the complainant and the respondent to do work before they come to you, might make your life easier, but, thank you, if you wanna waste, you know, not waste, but spend the time, devote the time to doing bylaws they may not need, you think, wait to see how it goes.
All right.
Great.
Anybody else?
Good.
No other business? Move to adjourn? Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
So moved. Thank you, guys.
All right.
So, May fifteenth.
Sixteenth.